That's why I do all my banking using Sierra Central Online Banking with the mobile banking app. I just snap a picture of any checks I need to deposit, or I pay my bills with their online bill payer service. It's so easy and convenient. I use my laptop, desktop, PC, or mobile device anytime from anywhere. That's how I live life, at the speed of me.
We sweat for moments of triumph. And we look forward to lunchroom chatter. We do it to help businesses prosper and communities thrive. It takes passion. It takes leadership and innovation. And it requires plenty of perseverance and teamwork. We are the catalyst for economic growth. We are the convener for leaders and influencers. We are the champion for a stronger Yuba Sutter. We are the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce.
Live streaming can be simple and not expensive. You may already have the basic tools right in your hand. But it's more than just pushing live to communicate effectively. That's where yubasutter.live and Live Streaming Y.S. on Facebook can help you. Make it easy to jump in. Just give us a call at 530-301-2931, or visit our website, www.yuba-sutter.live. Yuba Sutter is home of live streaming and live streaming tools, live streaming services, technology, and training. Live streaming is yubasutter.live.
Good evening to those of us, or those of you who've just joined us, and welcome to our local candidate forum. This evening is brought to you by the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce and the Appeal Democrat. My name is Marnie Sanders, and I am the CEO of the Chamber. For those of you who were tuned in for the Sutter County Supervisors Forum, welcome back. Our apologies if we're going to sound redundant, as we need to go through the format again for our candidates who I'd like to welcome for the City Council race. I'd like to extend a thanks to the City of Yuba City for allowing us to use the facilities. And I'd also like to thank our sponsors who have made these candidates, candidate forums possible to livestream tonight, Sierra Central Credit Union and Yuba Sutter Live. I would also like to thank some of our Champion Circle sponsors. We have Adventist Health &amp; Write Out, Adept Solutions, Colusa Casino Resort, Sutter Health, Hard Rock Hotel and Casino, Sacramento at Fire Mountain, and Recology. Thank you again, candidates, for joining us. And thank you to the audience we have watching on livestream. I am now going to turn it over to Joe McClure, who will go over the evening's format. Joe McClure is the Executive Vice President and Chief Banking Officer for Golden Pacific Bank, and he is also a member of our forum committee. And he is the Chair of our Government Affairs Committee, and he is a board member. All right, Joe, take it away.
Thanks, Marnie. Again, we will be hearing from candidates running for two open seats on the Yuba City Council. These candidates are Manny Cardoza, Sean Harris, Wade Kirchner, and Gary Maines. For those who are just joining us, this is how the forum will work. Each candidate will receive 90 seconds for an opening statement. And then we'll have a series of questions provided by our committee, audience members, and readers of the Appeal Democrat. If you'd like your question to be considered, please submit your questions in the comments area of the platform you're watching this forum on. And please keep your questions brief. Questions must address all candidates, otherwise they will not be allowed, as questions cannot be directed to only one candidate. Please be aware that we already have dozens of questions for our candidates, so if we don't get to yours, we do apologize. But we only have a certain amount of time for our questioning tonight. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. And rebuttals will be allowed only if there's a reference to a particular opposing candidate in another candidate's answer, and those rebuttals will be allowed for 30 seconds. At the end of the questions, each candidate will have up to two minutes for a closing statement, and there will be no rebuttals allowed during the closing statements. Candidates, please direct your attention to our timekeeper, Jackie Lee, in the middle of the room here. She will have three signs. One says 30 seconds, one says 15 seconds, and the third one says "Time's up." So please be respectful of everyone's time and stay within your limits with your answers. And again, we'd like to thank those who have joined us on livestream or are watching these forums from other platforms. We appreciate your interest in learning more about tonight's candidates. Our moderators tonight are Steve Miller, editor for the Appeal Democrat, and Bob Harland, Executive Director of the Yuba Sutter Colusa United Way, both of which have donated many hours to determine the issues pertinent to Yuba City and bring you tonight's forum. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to our moderators, Steve and Bob.
And I thank you very much, Joe. And welcome back for those of you who are watching live earlier for the Sutter County Board of Supervisors. We now have four panelists, four candidates, and we'll be going through a series of questions after our opening statements, which can be up to 90 seconds each. And we'll start the opening statement with Gary Maines. Gary?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm thankful for the organizations that have worked to put this together. I'm thankful that we live in a country that we have the freedom to still get together and do this. I was born in a small town in Idaho, but spent my 65 of the last years here in the Sacramento Valley. I raised three kids in Paradise, where I started my business, Maines Landscape Maintenance. I've been doing that since 1983. And moved back to Yuba City in 2007 and have been here since then. And I don't know if I would be here if it were not for the drama that has been unfolding in our country in the last year or so. But I was sitting in church one day, and the pastor said, "I think there's somebody here that needs to get involved in local government." Some of you people, and I felt a fire lit underneath me, and I said, "Okay, well, I've got time to do that." And so that is my initial passion. I'd like to see this state, I'd like to see this county and this city opened up. And I know that being a city councilman is a lot more than that, and I've got a lot to learn, and I trust these gentlemen would help me to do that. But I just want to be a voice for the people, the people that are out there complaining and struggling and hurting. I want to be a voice for them that says, "Yes, we need to open up, and we need to deal with a tyrannical governor." Thank you.
And our next opening statement will be from Wade Kirchner.
I'd like to begin by thanking the Appeal Democrat and the Chamber of Commerce for putting this on this evening. Good evening. My name is Wade Kirchner, and I am running for Yuba City City Council. I am a lifelong resident, where I live with my wife Lisa and our son Jack. I attended California State University Chico and graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree. I am a Master of Arts candidate in Educational Leadership from Bramin University. My professional life includes 20 years in the private sector as a sales professional and 10 in the public sector as an educator for Yuba City Unified School District. I believe in fiscal responsibility and not spending more than I have. Once elected, my priorities include reopening our businesses sooner rather than later. Our community has been hard hit by COVID-19, and we need to get people back to work. Public safety, the last year has seen a national debate on funding law enforcement. I believe our men and women, first responders, should be fully funded and be provided the tools that they need to succeed. This includes dispatchers, which are sorely needed. Next is the homelessness issue, which is one that I am frequently asked by our concerned citizens, who are alarmed by the increase of the numbers of homeless in our area. I believe in working with the county as well as nonprofit entities to come to a solution of the problem. Lastly, we need to hire a competent, qualified city manager. We need to do a better job than that we did last time. Thank you.
And our next presentation here is from Sean Harris, one of our two incumbents on the stand tonight.
Thank you very much, Bob, and I join my fellow candidates up here in thanking the Appeal Democrat and the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. My name is Sean Harris. I am running for city council. I'm running for reelection to your city council. I'm currently the city mayor in the city of Yuba City. I was born and raised here in Yuba City, dedicated my life first and foremost to my family, but secondly, to the public safety. I have over 32 years of public safety experience. Started out here locally with Sutter County Sheriff's Department, then by County Ambulance, Yuba County Sheriff's Department, and then with the California Highway Patrol. Retired here in 2017 as the commander and captain for the California Highway Patrol Area Office for the Yuba and Sutter Community. And in that role, I learned a great deal of leadership experience. I learned a great deal of budgetary experience, managing personnel under very extreme circumstances. I brought that experience and that knowledge with me to the city council one year before I retired, and I've done so for the last four years. I do have a master's degree, bachelor's degree, associate's degrees to back that up as well in addition to my experience. I do know that it will take strong leadership to continue the fight of COVID and to support and develop our communities and our economy and our community and our folks that live here for a better and higher quality of life. My priorities for the next four years will be, among many others, will be public safety, economic resilience, help get our folks through this, and of course, the never-ending debate of homelessness. We have a lot of work to do. I want to continue that fight, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Manny Cardoza.
Thank you, Bob. First of all, also, I'd like to thank the Chamber and the Appeal Democrat for hosting this forum. For those folks that don't know me out there, my name is Manny Cardoza. I am a councilman for the City of Yuba City. A little bit about me, I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Yuba City of 63 years. I raised my three daughters here. I attended all local schools, graduated from Yuba City High School. After that, I worked at locally owned mom and pop stores. I dabbled in agriculture with peaches, prunes, walnuts, a little bit of wheat, rice, and beans. I was lucky enough, at the age of 22, I was hired on by the City of Yuba City. I worked in the Public Works Utilities Division and retired after a 35-year career. After 35 years, I wondered what more I could do for the community, so I decided to run for city council, which I was elected in 2016. As an incumbent, the mayor and myself, we worked through and a learning curve the last four years and have accomplished quite a bit. I'm going to go quick on this. I'm going to announce my endorsements. I have been endorsed by the Yuba City Police Association, the Yuba City Firefighters Association, Yuba City Employees Association, and Local OE3. Thank you very much.
And thank you, gentlemen, for the opening statements. We're going to start out our first question from Steve for Wade Kirchner.
Thanks. Give us your assessment of how Yuba City stands in terms of both fire protection and flood protection.
Well, I'll start with the flood question first. Four years ago, I was asked that same question, and everybody was pretty smug about the conditions of our levees. Of course, we were in the end of a historic drought at the time. And I was the only one that mentioned any concern about that. And then a short time later, we had a real problem when the spillway at Orville broke apart, and it became a problem. So with the levees, that's always going to be an issue. That's not a one-time thing. That's vigilant. I think currently, they are being repaired with slurry walls, but there needs to be more with that. As far as the firefighter position question, we need to apply for some more safer grants to make sure that our first responders get the tools that they need and have a competitive salary, so we don't lose them to other districts. Thank you.
Sure. So the question is fire and flood protection. Fire Department, I will begin with that. Fire Department does an outstanding job with what they have to work with. I have multiple conversations on a regular basis with our fire chief and many of the firefighters. They would love to have more folks on the engines and more folks working. I certainly agree with that, and we will do what we can to continue that fight for more personnel and also to hire, retain quality personnel like we already do. Many of our folks are dedicated to the point where they've gone to strike teams throughout the state to help out other folks. So our fire department, I have the utmost confidence in them. Flood protection, as a member of Sutter Bues Flood Control Agency and a former chairman of the Board of the Sutter Bues Flood Control Agency, I know that we currently have a 200-year flood protection in place. Slurry walls are completed on the entire West Levy Ring, or excuse me, the entire West Levy section, and we are continuing to maintain that as best as we possibly can. I am confident that we are definitely much better than we have been compared to the last few years. There will always be ongoing operation maintenance to be done, so the conversation continues and work with Corps of Engineers on that. So thank you.
Okay. Could you repeat the question, please? Okay, for the fire protection, in the last four years, we have fully staffed our fire department. We have a great group of young men that help our city in need. We do need grants to fulfill, because we have a grant we're going on right now. It's going to be coming to an end in the next couple of years. We do need to find some money for the folks so we can keep it fully staffed. But we have a great fire department, and I can't say anything greater than the men that work, the men and women that work for our fire department. On the flood control, same thing with the mayor, I'm on the Sutter Bues Flood Control Board, and in the last four years, the slurry walls have been done from Orville to the other side of Nicholas. We have a 200-year wall. We are safe, like I said, much better than we were four years ago. And I guess that's going to be it for me on that. Thank you very much.
Not something that I'm as educated on as the gentleman, and I appreciate what they had to say. And what I would say is this, that I would hope that my experience in being self-employed and running a business would give me the wisdom to deal with whatever situations might arise, because I'm sure that both these areas are areas that are alive and changing and needing to be addressed. And so in some ways, I just have to plead ignorance, but I have to plead, pray for wisdom to listen and learn and make decisions. And I appreciate what my friend Wade said, that we don't spend money we don't have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to our next question, and we'll start out with Sean Harris. This is from one of the viewers tonight. Why has the critical position of city manager been effectively unfilled since Steve Crager resigned? Do you think it is acceptable that we go without a city manager for this long?
Well, ideally, we will always have a city manager in place. It is just like any other position in city government or any business that hires an employee, you have to have the right fit. Is it acceptable? Of course not. We want to do what we can to fill that position, but it is the process. We want to make sure we have a good fit, and it is a critical position, which is why it's such a high-profile position and probably what generated the question to begin with. We want to move forward and do the best we possibly can to find the right person for the job we thought we did before. That ended up, our former city manager decided to move on to other opportunities. However, we do recognize the fact that it is a critical position. We want to fill it as soon as possible, however, we do not want to just settle. So it's going to be a very deliberate process. We've appointed an ad hoc committee, two members of the city council, to work with our consultant to move forward, so we make sure, time's up, but to make sure that we do it the best way possible this time, given the candidate pool, which is a challenge.
Manny?
Okay. I don't want to repeat the exact words that the mayor said, because we were both dealing with this together, but we are looking for a highly qualified city manager. The COVID didn't help us much on this, so that's why it's been a while for us to start this process. But it is a process. The council is all working together to find us a new city manager. We're in the process of doing this as we speak. And on that note, it's, like I said, it's a hard process. We're hoping to find a highly qualified individual, and in the very short future, we will have a new city manager working with us. Thank you.
Gary?
Well, I have to agree with the gentleman that it is a process. It needs to be deliberate, and I would just pray for wisdom that we would find and understand the right person for the job. Being in business for myself many years, I've hired and fired many people. And you want to be compassionate, but you want to make sure that someone is qualified, and you just need wisdom. And so I pray that as we look for this person, that we will find wisdom to hire the right person.
Wade?
So I was a Crager fan. It was a huge hit for this city, this community, when he chose to leave. And I think the city's really dropped the ball with hiring a qualified, incompetent city manager. We're still paying for the one that left. As far as the process of looking for one, I think that in addition to just putting feelers out there, I think we need to go to these communities and ask the people there how they feel about our candidates. And I think the city needs to do a better job at that. Thank you.
Manny, we'll start with you on this one. Here's a question that a reader sent in. It seems we hear as much complaining when a development or construction project is approved as we do from builders who want to get plans approved. Is there too much red tape or about the right amount? How do you make it as easy as possible for developers without overlooking the wishes of residents?
That is a very good question, Steve. We've had red tape in the past, but we have a wonderful economic development department now as we speak. We have cut the red tape more than half. We have a wonderful department. It could be done online. It saves time, and these buildings and construction groups and people that want to develop in our community, it's an easy process. All they have to do is come in and talk to us, and we will be glad to work with them and get the process going and done in a timely manner.
Thanks. Gary?
I think it's probably critical to get the public involved as much as possible, and I would guess that most of the public doesn't really understand all the processes. And when I decided to run for city council, I spoke to a good family member. I said, "I'm running for city council." And she said, "What's that? What do they do?" And I realized that six months ago, it would have been my answer. And so I realized that the public, getting them involved in these processes is a real fight, is a real problem, and that would be what I would think I would kind of focus on. There are probably gentlemen that know the business better than I do, but knowing the people and informing them, making them understand what we're trying to do and what it will cost, that would be my approach, I would say.
Thanks. Wade?
Well, I think another word for red tape is incentive. Developers have to have a reason to want to build here, and usually, the reason is profit. If they can build in Lincoln and Roseville for relatively the same building material costs as it costs to make a building in Yuba City, the decision for them is pretty simple. I think we need to be a little bit more competitive when it comes to developer fees and give them a reason to build in our community in addition to, say, senior living facilities. Thank you.
Thanks. Sean?
Yeah, the first part of your question that I really keyed on is the public. How do we make things better for the public? And the public has a process by way, by virtue of the planning commission. We have hearings when new businesses and opportunities come to town. They will have the opportunity, that's their first opportunity, to express their opinion to planning commission and make a proper decision. Our job for development is definitely, we want to streamline the processes as much as possible, and that goes for any process in city government, not just development. I really think it's very important that we make it as easy as possible for people to communicate with their government, with their city council, and everybody. Online, as Manny mentioned, also, we have already done so, and by way of another ad hoc committee, we've reduced impact fees by 150%. We've created the entire city as now an opportunity zone. So impact fees have already been reduced, incentivizing developers to come in. I've already talked with multiple developers who have made projects in Yuba City and are in the works, have only done so because of that effort. We will continue to do that. Thank you.
Our next question will start out with Gary Maines. Retail sales at brick-and-mortar stores are gradually giving way to online sales. How do you see that affecting the city? And how can we stop that bleeding?
I don't know if you can stop free enterprise. We have a capitalist economy. Capitalism seems to work, and it seems to be those that can offer the services get the business. When I lived in Paradise, we voted to not have a Walmart Supercenter in our area. People had a voice. But basically, it comes down to this: people have the freedom to choose. I don't know that you can tell people they can't choose this or can't choose that. It's hard. People are just trying to save money, and even though we buy something that we know is manufactured in China, we talk against it, but yet we buy it to save a little money. So I don't know. It's in the hands of people, really, I would have to say. And I don't know that there's something that you could legislate to say that they can't do that. That's free enterprise. So that would be my answer.
Wade Kirchner?
You know, Bob, prior to COVID, this was an issue with brick-and-mortar stores. I think COVID just made it much, much worse. I think the way you tackle that is you promote... I think what you, the, the way you tackle that is you promote shopping and dining in our area, and almost make it a patriotic thing, because I think what we need to do is we need to support those places and those businesses that supported us when times were good, because they're, they're hurting right now. Thank you.
Sean?
Yes. You know, online shopping is definitely the way of the future. A lot of people are going that direction. I know we are now able to, or we now have to, when we buy something from Amazon, we pay taxes on that. However, I think the last frontier is service. We have service level, and it's one of the beautiful things about Yuba City is our small-town atmosphere. When you go, you, even to the post office, and you park 15 feet from the front door, you're not paying to park, and the guy behind, or gal behind the counter knows your name, that's service. That's where you want to go, rather than buy things online. Our restaurants, our local businesses that offer unique opportunities for folks to shop, that is, that is key. The last frontier is service. But also, we need to think of creative ways, because sales tax might not be the way of the future, the way to get a primary, get money. That is a question yet to be answered and explored, but definitely something worth exploring, for sure. Thank you.
Manny?
All right. Well, the city has a slogan, it's been here for years, "Shop local, buy local, stay local." And we really push that and endorse that. We are very fortunate that, like we said, we do have the online shopping, but we try having the citizens buy in the community to, with our local businesses. The Chamber is very, very wonderful, I'm going to give them a plug, because they do promote businesses in our community, throughout the community and both sides of the river. The DBA on Pluma Street does a wonderful job promoting Pluma Street. So we do have folks buying in our community. I know there's some that, Amazon and so, you got to get some things that can't be bought here, but the majority does shop and stay local in our community. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll start this question with, for Wade. Council has, here's a question that somebody wrote in. Council's contemplated putting a sales tax measure on the ballot to increase sales tax for the city. What's your position with respect to placing this on the ballot? Why didn't it get supported for ballot placement this November?
So, I'm, I'm against any kind of tax, sales tax at the, at the current time. I don't, I don't see it necessary. I think that there is probably a time and a place. Marysville experimented, experimented with that a few years back, and in that specific instance, it was able to get them out of some issues that they had at the time, but I do not think, and I would not support a, a, a raise in a sales tax beyond the city council. Thank you.
Expenses to run a city, expenses to run a business continue to go up. It's just a matter, it's just a fact of life. I am generally in, not in favor of taxes. I do not like them. Who does? However, when it becomes necessary, you can articulate a, a verifiable and empirical data to justify the, the increase that maybe the city would need, an extra revenue. I would definitely support the notion of sending it before the voters and let them decide with complete information and education, and let them, make them informed choice to decide if that is something that they are willing to help contribute to. One thing about sales taxes, you can also, it's not necessarily local residents, but people traveling through as well will help support our economy. So, I am not in favor of taxes in general, however, I am supportive of letting the voters decide, and I would do so.
Well, I hate to copy Mayor Harris, but on this, but we, the taxes, or excuse me, stuff is going up, and the money is not coming into our, coming into the city for us to take care of our infrastructure and businesses throughout, or excuse me, infrastructure and employees of our city. The tree has been picked. It's pretty lean. I'm not really for a tax measure, but I would invite this to the community, just like the mayor says. I would let, I would educate the community, let them make the decision, and whatever the community, whatever the community agrees upon, that is what I would uphold. Thank you.
Wow. That's a tough one. I, I, I'm against any kind of taxes unless it's just absolutely necessary, but people need to be making the choice. The public needs to be informed, but they need to be informed of why we need a tax, exactly. Because most of the time, people just say, "Oh, a tax," and they don't know. But they don't know what's happening behind the scenes, that the things that we're trying to pay, the services we're trying to provide. And fortunately, it seems like our society has become kind of an entitlement society. This is what I'm deserved. I, I should get this, I should get that. And they don't want to ask the questions of how we're going to pay for that, so. But at this point, the public does have a vote, they have a say in it, those that are willing to learn and make that vote. And so, inflation is not going to stop. It's not going to stop. So, thank you.
Moving on to our next question, we'll start with Sean Harris. Council currently has held off on road maintenance for other priorities. Streets in Yuba City compared to other cities are in terrible shape. As a councilperson, or as somebody who wants to be a councilperson, why has the city held off on road maintenance? Is it also that there would be more support for a sales tax increase? If you're not an incumbent, what is your position on road maintenance in terms of priorities?
Okay. That's a pretty true question there.
I will, I will, I will just, we're talking about roads here, right? Believe me, we have not wanted to hold off on road maintenance, just to keep our roads even keel. We need $8 million a year, just to keep it flat. We have three. That's just, it's a money thing. You drive down Bridge Street, you better, you better hold on to your teeth. That's just the way it is. And we're hoping to get some funding. As a member of the Board of Directors on the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, we have that Bridge Street corridor is on the radar for that, trying to seek funding to improve our streets there. We, if you talk about revenue measure, that may be an opportunity right there if we target four roads specifically. We have a $5 million gap, and that's just to keep us flat. No pun intended. So, we want roads. It's not, not something we enjoy doing, but we have to, we have to keep people safe, too. And so, we, there's, it's a matter of competing priorities. But definitely, I, I hear folks when they talk about the roads, I feel it myself, and we, it's something we definitely need to work on. Thank you.
Manny?
Okay. Like the, like Mayor Harris says, we need 8 million, we're only spending 3. Our street department does the best they can do with the money they have. I'm sorry to say, we are putting Band-Aids throughout our streets in the city of Yuba City, until we can get more money from the state to help us, or a tax revenue measure, that's the only way that this, this problem's going to be solved. But at this time, I'm very happy for what our street department does for the citizens of the community. If you have a pothole in the community, please call, and we will, and we will take care of the issue within 24 hours. We have the Yuba City 311 app, and they do a wonderful job, and I'm very proud of our street department for what they do for our community. Thank you.
Gary?
Well, I would say that the, the city council is probably doing the best they can with what they have, obviously. And I think one thing we can do is try to help the public see what is priority in our city. It's like my wife says, "I, I want new carpet." And I said, "Well, then we can't take that vacation this week." Or, "I want a speedboat." Well, you want carpet, you want a boat, you know, we have to set our priorities. And that's our job as a city council, or will be, that we are able to present to the city, this is the priority. We'd like to have this, but we can only do what we have money to do. Do you have any ideas of how we can increase our income? Ask the public. Involve them in, into these kind of discussions, but if they understand all the priorities that we're setting, then they can't complain so much.
Wade?
Steve, you got to read that question again.
Oh, it's me that read the question.
All right. Hey, Bob, can you read that question again?
How do you feel about the roads?
Okay. Well, it, it, if I remember part of it correctly, it said compared to other cities. And I, I kind of take exception with that, because I don't think that person's driven through Marysville lately. But having said that, obviously, our roads are, are, are important, and it is all about priorities. And, you know, yeah, roads are important.
Okay. Starting with Manny. Here's another question from another reader. You've sat across the river watching Marysville pull in revenue from marijuana dispensaries. The city reports no uptick in crime or problems related to commercial sales. Will there ever be a time when Yuba City considers allowing dispensaries? Why or why not?
Okay. The past council and myself on it, also, we have a zero, a zero tolerance for dispensaries in our community. And we are, we are upholding that. If someone needs to have something, they can easily drive across the river and fulfill their needs. There's also a delivery service that will come to your home. Folks that need it for medical, medical reasons, I'm all for it. The state has rules and regulations where you can grow it indoors in your house. Other than that, it's a zero tolerance in our community, and I'm going to uphold what the past council and myself has voted on in the past and for the future. Thank you.
Gary?
I'm against it. Simple answer.
Okay. Wade?
Are you sure? No. You know, I, just because you can make money on something isn't a reason to do it. I think with something like, with the marijuana issue, you got to consider the, the downside of it. And I, you know, at, at the end of the day, if, the voters have got to, the voters have got to approve it. Personally, I'm, I don't, I don't see the, the, the positive side of it. As was mentioned before, if somebody really has to have it, they're free to drive to Marysville and buy some. Thank you.
Thanks. Sean?
Definitely, I, I've came around a little bit and understand that there are folks who can benefit from the use of cannabis for medical purposes. However, majority of this council, and also majority of the folks and constituents who have contacted me on this issue, are not in favor of it. I also happen to be personally not in favor of introducing drugs into our city. There, there are other alternatives available, immediately available, within five minutes from right here. And I think I would encourage people to consider taking advantage of those opportunities. While it may be a cash cow, the, the money alone is more, there's more to consider than just the money alone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Our next question, we'll start with Gary. A lot of progress has been made in services to homeless individuals in our area. There's a well-crafted network of organizations, including the county, the city of Yuba City, and other organizations. What are the next steps we must take to keep the process of reducing homelessness going?
Well, that's been a passion of mine for years, and it drove me to get involved personally. As a young man, I lived in paradise, and I traveled to Oroville Rescue Mission for 12 years, every month, sharing the gospel. And I was a musician, and I would play and sing, and try to love on those men and try to encourage them. I found myself taking many of them home, trying to give them a hand up, say, "I'm going to work today, you go out and hit the streets, too." And a lot of them just disappeared. But still, and then I was involved at, at the River Bottom Church and the Hands Up Ministry for four years as their worship leader. That was my, individually, reaching out. To think that we can make a law or a program that is going to motivate people, it's people that need to care. And in my opinion, the church in America has failed greatly in addressing this issue, and it has kind of put it on the backs of government, and it shouldn't be there.
Wade?
So, Bob, I was talking about this, to this issue with our chief law enforcement officer here in Sutter County the other night, and he hit me with some numbers that I was surprised to hear, that there is currently somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,000 residents, people in this community that is, that are homeless. You see it on Second Street. If you take the, if you take a bike on a levee from, from the Fifth Street Bridge out to Shanghai, you see it. I think there's the folks that are really down on their luck, that probably need some assistance. There's the, the mental health issue, part of that, and there are services to, to be directed at those, for those folks. And there's, there's folks, it's just, it's, it's a lifestyle for them, and I think that those people need to be encouraged, frankly, to go someplace else. This is an issue that's, this is a tough issue. The last month, when I go, when I've gone door-to-door, this is the number-one issue that's, that's thrown at me, and I think we need to do a more of a community. The city needs to work with the county with this, it's a very complex issue. Thank you.
Sean?
Definitely a very complex issue. My personal opinion is we need to empower versus enable these folks to rise out of homelessness. Your specific question is what are the next steps? We have several already in place. We've had partnerships with the county. We have new, the city has invested in New Haven Housing Complex, right there on the corner of Percy Avenue and Garden Highway. We have arrest areas in the works. The county just bought a, a hotel. We also have a Better Way in progress here in Sutter County. Those next steps, but there are as many reasons for being homeless as there are homeless people, whether it be domestic violence, mental illness, unemployment, high cost of housing, you name it. Those issues, we have to take on individually on their own, on their own front, to try to combat that, but also help out the people that are, that are not only in that situation and need help, but want the help, and do the best we can. We also allocated funds to a PD position. We have a police officer who is dedicated to homeless issues, and that alone, and he's doing an outstanding job.
Manny?
Okay. As a member of the Bay County Homeless Joint Powers of Authority, all six jurisdictions now are working as one. We all have the same guidelines, the same methods, and the same means, that we're all working together, so that someone isn't going to bounce across the river back and forth. They are taken, we know who they are, we have names for them, and we're there to help. There are two types of homeless, there are the ones that don't want help, and the ones that want help. We are there for the ones that want help. We are there, we're there to help them, and Better Ways, and just in the last year, Better Ways has taken 50 homeless folks off the streets and put them in housing. And Yuba County, in the last couple of years, has taken over 300, 400 people, I can't even give the exact amount, but, and put them in homes. So we work, we are working on the cause, and it's going to take us a while, but we are going to win this war against homelessness. Thank you.
Thanks. For this question, we'll start with Wade. I wanted to talk about COVID-19 before we run out of time. Here's the bit. A lot of people have this desire to try to simplify things. So you hear a lot of people who think that everything should open up right away, there's no reason not to open up. You also hear a lot of people who think this is going to be over with pretty soon. Well, what if opening everything up doesn't make a lot of sense? Tell me if you think so. And what if it goes on for a year? What if it goes on for another year and a half? We don't know how long it'll last. So the question is, where's your leadership skills come into play in this situation? How do you lead us out of this?
So, the, that's a great question, because we don't know how long this is going to drag on for. But there's, there's, there's certain things that have happened recently that just didn't make sense, as far as, as, as far as when to open and not to open. A lot of things that people didn't consider. For example, it's, it's raining ash, and people are sitting outside in, in, at our eateries. And it took, it took the leadership of our Assemblyman Gallagher to say, "This, this, folks, this isn't making sense." I don't think with COVID, there's a one-size-fits-all, and that's why a lot of these rural, rural areas are, are bucking the trend. And even locally, we've got churches that never shut down. I, I think with, with your specific question, a lot of that has to do with, with, unfortunately, what our, what our governor says we should do, and how our county health officer reacts to that, so.
Thanks. Sean?
I believe your question was, what's, what leadership skills do I bring to the table that'll help us navigate through the COVID-19? I know, I know I have over 20 years of experience in leadership, and specifically in law enforcement on very dire circumstances, and it, it's, it's resonant of this COVID-19 situation. Other than whether them react, we are responding. We have to respond methodically. We have, half of our folks think we need to reopen everything immediately, half of our folks need Half of our folks need to, we need to shut down everything immediately. And as, sitting up here in this room right here, we have to balance those concerns with science, with sound policy, and collaboration with our state officials. And when I had multiple conversations with specifically Assemblyman Gallagher on how we address this issue, and it is very important that we have a unified response. We do not know how long it's going to take. A global pandemic is a new phenomenon, thank God. But, and we are learning as we're going. But I think the fact that the folks that were providing information to us were also doing the same thing, which was created inconsistency, which also bred some mistrust. And so it became a very partisan inflammatory topic. But we need to get through that, have some sound judgment, base it in science, communicate with our officials, and move forward as best we possibly can given the information we have.
Thanks. Manny?
Well, the beginning of the question, what knowledge do I have as a leader? Six months ago, I'm going to say none, because it's COVID. I'm not a medical doctor and know the history of COVID-19. But in the last six months, I have learned quite a bit. The bottom line is, the governor's making the rules. It's kind of tough. Dr. Lou is doing a wonderful job for what she has. She's taken care of over 175,000 folks in our twin cities. And we're just going to have to, the council, we all working together and agree that the businesses, they, we just suggest you do what you need to do. We're not out there enforcing them, telling them to shut down. But if the state comes in, that's a little different story. But we're there to help the businesses and the community. Like I said, we have to uphold what the health director says. And we're working on this. And I'm hoping this can be done quicker than another six months to a year. Thank you.
Thanks. Gary?
I'm very glad for what Gallagher is doing. I think the governor has trampled on our constitutional rights. We need to bully him more than he's bullying us. And I just want to be a voice for that growing resistance. And it's growing very much, the resistance. I think the COVID is a virus, but I think there's also a lot behind that politically. And I don't think the governor intends to open up until after the election. Like I said, I think he's trampling on our constitutional rights, our right to pursuit of happiness and pursuing income. And we need to stand up to him. And it may cost us something. It may cost us money. But you know, one of our founding fathers said, "Sometimes the tree of liberty must be watered with the blood of patriots." And that's where I stand. I stand for what the constitution has given me, God-given inalienable rights. And let the local people deal with the local problems. Let them use their wisdom instead of having to bow down to Newsom. Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's move on to our final question. And after our final question is answered, we'll move on to our two-minute closing statements. The final question, we'll start with Sean Harris. Is annexing the Keyhole area in South Yuba City a dead issue?
It is right now. People, the voters have spoken. However, I'm not opposed to re-explooring the opportunity and explaining the benefits to folks. It's not the city's job to persuade the folks that live down there to do anything that they don't want to do. It's our job to communicate the benefits, pros, cons, or give the information impartially so they can make a decision on their own. The timing might not be right right now. Again, a majority of folks have said they are not ready for it. I would like to see it happen personally, but it's not up to me. Primarily because I would love to have Beat Six staffed and manned by our police department and clean up the map a little bit and get our city residents served by a city PD and some city services in that area. If those folks remain of the opinion that they do not want to annex, I will certainly respect that. Thank you.
Manny?
Okay, can you repeat the question one more time, please? I know it was easy, but...
Is annexing the Keyhole area in South Yuba City a dead issue?
And like the mayor said, yes, it is at this time. But I would love to educate the folks in that area and let them know all the great benefits that they could have once they are annexed into the city. There was been stories told to them several years ago, saying if you annex into the city, you have to put curb and gutter in, you have to hook up the city sewer, and pay for streetlights, so on and so forth. It was stuff that was, they're not responsible for. They can be annexed in and still have their home just the way they want it. They only have to hook up the sewer if their septic goes, if their septic fails. They don't have to put curb and gutter in their front yard. But it's up to the voters. I would love to educate them. I'd like to take another shot at it. And if they say yes, it'd be a wonderful thing for Beat Six. If they say no, then so be it. Thank you.
Gary?
I can't improve on either Sean's or Manny's answers. I would just have to agree with what they just said, honestly.
Okay. Wade?
So I grew up in the Keyhole. And it's surprising to me that a lot of people that live in the Keyhole don't understand why they don't want to have it. It's not that, what is going to happen, it's what might happen. I think there was a lot of disinformation that was spread a couple of years ago. I believe there's a lot of benefits to it, one of which is better law enforcement patrol. But once again, it would be up to the voters to decide and to educate themselves. I think if it doesn't happen at some point, I think the city's going to leapfrog that area and push out towards, eventually push out past Bog Road. But again, it is essentially up to the voters to decide to annex it. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. We'll move to our closing statements, which can be up to two minutes. And we'll start with Wade Kirshner.
Well, first of all, I would like to, once again, thank the Appeal Democrat in the chamber for putting this special event on today. If you ask me, what I think separates me from the current city council is transparency. We have a current mayor who is on his second consecutive term, because we have a former vice mayor who recused himself from that position. The question that I've been asked frequently is why? As a voter in Sutter County, I expect a level of transparency from my elected officials. 2020 has been a rough year and a decisive, divisive one. At the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want to live in a safe community where we can raise our children and our grandchildren free from fear. This past year, we've heard a lot about this matters, that matters. Guess what? Your vote matters. Two years ago, 72 votes separated the winner from the loser in the city council race. This past March, in the Sutter County District Four Supervisor Race, two votes separated the winner and the loser. My name is Wade Kirshner, and I humbly ask you for your vote. Thank you very much.
Sean?
Thank you very much, Bob. I would like to repeat my appreciation for all the folks, the chamber, and the Appeal Democrat, and all of the sponsors who made this event possible today. This is a very important process. And I think for everybody watching today, I appreciate all of them taking the time to tune in, figure out how to do that. I know these events are normally very well-attended, and hopefully they are. This one is virtually. I simply want to, again, say thank you for the time. I've had a really good run, I think, the first four years on this Yuba City Council. It's been my honor to serve. It's been my honor to serve the last two years as your mayor. And I want to continue to do so. We have a lot of conversations going on to improve our city. We mentioned roads, unfunded liability, getting through the other side of COVID, the budget crisis or the budget challenges that that presents. We have those conversations in place. I have the relationships in Washington DC, Sacramento, on the various boards and commissions I serve, and will be able to hit the ground running in service of this city. I do humbly appreciate and enjoy the endorsement of Yuba City employees, the Professional Building and Trains Associations, the Yuba City Police Officers Association, Yuba City Firefighters, several former mayors, Senator Jim Nielsen, and many other folks. I also have a connection out at Beal Air Force Base. I belong to the Beal Military Liaison Commission and serve as an honorary commander in that capacity and have traveled to Washington DC. It's my honor to do so on behalf of our airmen, primarily with reciprocity for spouses so we can get those folks in some, also in some good housing and a quality way of life. They too are part of our community. And we really support and defend and appreciate our military personnel. It's an honor to serve. I want to keep doing so for the reasons I mentioned. It's also pretty fun. So thank you very much, and have a good night.
Manny?
Also, I would like to thank the chamber and the Appeal Democrat for hosting this forum. I would like to say that being retired, I have the time for the community. I have the time to help my council, the citizens of the community, and also the community services that I volunteer quite often for throughout the areas. I have an open door policy. Anybody can knock on my door if they have an issue. If I can help them, I'm the first one there. And they can call me whenever is needed. And we've done that in the last four years. I'm very proud that I have very happy folks. Sometimes it's not all that way, but the majority of the time, we can help them make things better for our community. Some community groups that I serve on, I am the chairperson for our Regional Housing Authority. I'm on the Sutter County Affordable Housing Vice President. As I said earlier, I'm on the Bi-County Homeless JPAs. I'm a member of the Peach Bowl Alliance Club, past president. I'm a member of the Early Risers Kiwanis, past board of directors. And I'm on the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement. In closing, I respectfully ask for your vote. Please vote for Manny Cardoza for city council. Thank you.
And Gary?
Well, I'm impressed by the knowledge and the experience of the gentlemen to my left. They all seem to have an understanding. They've done their job and they've learned the ropes. They know what's going on. And I would just hope that life has brought me to a place where I've learned how to learn. I've found myself even telling young people, they don't like going to school. I say, "Well, you may not use that particular course in your life, but you're learning how to learn." And I believe that that's where I'm at right now. These guys know much more than I do about the job. But I've been spending time today with Spencer, and I've spent time, trying to spend time with the police, just trying to learn. I know I've got to catch up, but that's a part of it, being able to learn. And the second point I would make would be involving my character. You don't know me. And I'll tell you a story. Six years ago, I met a young lady on a website called Christian Filipino. I was looking for a wife. And after a while, we hit it off pretty good. And then I realized that she really didn't know me. She needed someone to vouch for me. So I said, "Dina, I'm going to give you my pastor's phone number, three of my pastor's phone numbers, and you give them to your pastor, and you let him call them and ask them any questions you want about me. I've got nothing to hide." And she did the same thing for me. That meant a lot to both of us. And that's what I would say to the public. You don't know me, but I've got nothing to hide. And if you want to know what I stand for, you've heard some of those things that I've spoken tonight. I'm open and I'm willing to talk and willing to try to explain why I believe what I believe. And I hope that I can be a voice in helping this city run better. We're always looking for ways to run it better and more efficiently. And just like me and my business, I have to consider all these things too. How can I make more money and be a blessing to others? Because, thank you for your time.
And gentlemen, thank you very much. And if we could have the four people in the audience applaud. And we thank everybody involved in putting on this forum this evening. Remind you that it is available to view on the Appeal Democrat Facebook page all the way through Election Day. And you'll see it popping up in other places as well. So please take an opportunity to spread the word about our series of forums. Again, thank you very much. And we'll see you tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock for two more forums for the Yuba County Board of Supervisors and also the Marysville City Council. Thank you.
Between work and all my other daily duties, it's hard for me to get to the bank. That's why I do all my banking using Sierra Central Online Banking with the mobile banking app. I just snap a picture of any checks I need to deposit, or I pay my bills with their online bill payer service. It's so easy and convenient. I use my laptop, desktop, PC, or mobile device anytime from anywhere. That's how I live life, at the speed of me.
We work for sounds of pitter-patter. We sweat for moments of triumph. And we look forward to lunchroom chatter. We do it to help businesses prosper and communities thrive. It takes passion. It takes leadership and innovation. And it requires plenty of perseverance and teamwork. We are the catalyst for economic growth. We are the convener for leaders and influencers. We are the champion for a stronger Yuba-Sutter. We are the Yuba-Sutter Chamber of Commerce. Grow with us.
Live streaming can be simple and not expensive. You may already have the basic tools right in your hand. But it's more than just pushing live to communicate effectively. That's where yubasutter.live and Live StreamingYS on Facebook can help you. Make it easy to jump in. Just give us a call at 530-301-2931 or visit our website, www.yuba-sutter.live. Yuba-Sutter is home of live streaming and live streaming tools, live streaming services, technology, and training. Live streaming is yubasutter.live.
Between work and all my other daily duties, it's hard for me to get to the bank. That's why I do all my banking using Sierra Central Online Banking with the mobile banking app. I just snap a picture of any checks I need to deposit or I pay my bills with their online bill payer service. It's so easy and convenient. I use my laptop, desktop, PC, or mobile device anytime from anywhere. That's how I live life, at the speed of me.